I live at 2115 Aldrich Avenue South, a little bit further south of the project, but also in the same block. And I also feel that the six stories would look out of place. We have a community area plan, I believe that's the right term, that the neighborhood has approved and even discussed with Councilman Bender at a recent meeting about the citizen overlay project or the street overlay project. Anyway, about the city following more of the neighborhood plans as they've been developed. And this still is in conflict with that. And so our neighborhood is impacted greatly by increasing from four stories to six. And again, I do think there's a safety and security issue on the 15-foot setback being changed to three feet, four, or however, if it goes through 32 to 39 as it was presented. We do not have alleyways between our, behind our houses, the way other blocks in our community are, so that variance has a big impact to us. So we really request that the city consider following the plan, the community area plan as it was designed, with modest variances. I get that the project needs to have variances in order to be cohesive, and that makes some sense, but not six stories. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address.
Hey, guys. My name is Kathleen Hokinson. I live at 604 Ridgewood Avenue. We are, my husband Eric and I have been in the neighborhood for 30 years. We own 604 and 606 Ridgewood Avenue, which is very similar, but just a catty corner from what she talked about. This is just right on the intersection, right past Rudolph's, right behind Rudolph's, the street that goes up. We love Don. We love what he's doing. We love everything he's talking about. But my husband urged me to come here and say, "We don't like the fact that you want to build it bigger than the code. Go ahead and build the corner. Go ahead and do that. But if you know the area, we can't afford any more people." If you're in the afternoon, Don doesn't live there, we do. But if you have to walk down to the wedge to go get groceries, you have to walk because you can't get in your car to get there. It'll take you a half an hour to get two blocks. So to add more people to that congested corner is an issue. The height is an issue. We're on the hill. We look out over that. It's a problem. We're not, we're not the Greenway, we're the gateway. We're the beginning, the transition into a really cool neighborhood that provides beautiful old houses alongside with some really cool innovative property. But this isn't the time for a six-story facility right there. But we love what Don's doing. We're his biggest fans. But not today, not in this neighborhood, because it is a very localized neighborhood. We all walk. There's runners. We don't need more cars trying to get into that congested corner. And just think about what's going to happen to Super America. You can't get in there now. It's a problem. You can't actually, you can't even move from, I would say, 28th going north on Lindale Avenue just to get to the highway, which is my backyard. You can't get there. It takes you 25 minutes. So to add more congestion, more people on that corner, may not be the right time today. Pick a different corner. Come in and gradually come into a beautiful area that is not the Greenway. These are beautiful homes, beautiful neighborhoods. We've all spent a lot of money and a lot of time making sure those neighborhoods, though we are east of, I would say, Kenwood, we've still got a little bit of charm, and we'd like to restore that and maintain it. So just about the story, Don. Anything else, I'm cool with. We're cool with that. But we just wanted to come out and tell you. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have several applications before us, six actually. Would someone like to start us off with a motion, or are there any further questions? Commissioner Kronzer.
I will get the ball rolling here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the staff recommendation for the rezoning from the C1 district to the C2 district at the stated addresses.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve item A, the rezoning. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Dagnan.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Freeland.
Aye.
That is 4-8-0.
Right. And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you?
Certainly. I'd like to make a motion to approve staff recommendations with the one stated condition of the conditional use permit to increase the maximum height from four stories to six stories.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve item B, the conditional use permit for building projects. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just because a lot of the testimony was specific to the height issue, I wanted to note that I'd be happy to have staff come up and clarify that this is a conditional use permit, which means this height is allowed with conditions, as long as the applicant has met those conditions, which is different than a variance. And I know that gets confusing, these different legal applications, but generally speaking, this height is allowed here, as long as the applicant has met the conditions in the conditional use permit. And I also just wanted to clarify this question about, is there a plan that says we only want four-story buildings versus six-story buildings in this area? Because I actually don't think it's covered. There's a Lynn Lake Small Area Plan and a Uptown Small Area Plan, both of which give general guidance for this area, but I don't believe that either of those plans have a specific height to this site, but I wanted to clarify that with staff.
Correct. The conditional use permit to increase maximum height, the height is permitted, provided that they meet the conditions and the findings of the conditional use permit, which the analysis of that is within the staff report, and staff did find that the proposed height met all of those findings. Secondly, the Small Area Plan, the Lynn Lake Small Area Plan, does not specify that the maximum height here is four stories. The maximum height for the zoning code is four stories. That's why the conditional use permit to increase maximum height is required. I do believe that I saw in one of the public comment letters that perhaps the Larry Hill Use Neighborhood Association hasn't adopted recommendations that the properties in this area would be four stories, but that's not a city council-adopted plan.
All right. Thanks for that clarification. And is there any further discussion on the motion to approve item B? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Dagnan.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Freeland.
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer, would you like to continue?
To approve staff recommendations for the increase in the floor area ratio from 2.38 to 3.0.
We have a motion and a second to approve item C, the variance for floor area ratio. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Dagnan.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yes. I'd like to propose a motion to approve staff recommendations for both variances, items D and E, with the one stated condition for D, these are both yard setback requirements.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve variances D and E. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. President. The other kind of, I think, unresolved question that I've heard tonight, and also in an email from constituents, was about this, the issue of the garage enclosure and where that landed. And I wondered if staff or the applicant could talk through the ventilation, and is it opened or closed, and then how that back wall was treated? Because I know there were several different iterations of that over the couple of years now that this project has been in development. Just so we're all very clear about that final. It's in the packet, but...
Elizabeth Leibert again. And to talk about the parking garage, it is fully enclosed. The proposed ventilation system that we've been working on with our mechanical engineers would be to have the intake on the lid of the parking structure on this, would be the second level, and that would be vertically, and that would carry down through all levels of the parking garage. And the exhaust of the parking garage would exit north onto Franklin Avenue. But it is fully enclosed, with the exception, there's no door on the entrance off of Franklin or Lindale Avenue.
Right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve variances D and E? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Dagnan.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Freeland.
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. Finally, Commissioner Kronzer, we have item F, the site plan review.
And review as reviewed by staff with the six stated conditions.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item F, the site plan review. Commissioner Kronzer.
Yeah, I have a question for Commissioner Slack. Could you restate your question and concern about the street trees?
It was sort of a question and a comment. I think throughout this planning process, we've seen images of landscape treatments at that corner, and I think even the image in this package still shows raised planters, which, you know, I think with the type of plant material that's in them, getting the trees up out of the ground and elevated, kind of helps to kind of reinforce that gateway experience. Without the raised planters, it brings those smaller, shorter statured trees closer to the ground plane, which, you know, initially, you're going to have a lot of issues with the heights of the branches, and they're going to have to be high-pruned. And I think they're going to just have a tougher time in that urban environment. And so I would prefer to see street trees, real street trees, rather than the trees that are proposed there in those six locations at the corner. So, sorry, that wasn't a question, it was more just the response.
Yeah, we'll continue to work with staff and our civil engineer and landscape architect to refine that and look at getting the street trees in there. Thank you.
I think the applicant does a good job with soil volume, at least what I can see in the plan. So if we can add a seventh condition to just ensure that all trees being shown within the public realm are street trees, I would be fine with that.
I could add that motion on to my, or add that condition on my motion, a proposed seventh condition to work with staff to plant street trees and all trees within the public realm. That covered it.
All right. So we have a motion and a second on adding that seventh condition. Commissioner Freeland.
As a representative of the park board that takes care of trees, it's really hard to replant trees. And the addition of canopy trees is better for us, the environment, and certainly for the park board, which will now be maintaining those trees. So I appreciate the amendment.
Okay. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last item that has come up is the roof deck. So I think we've added, this is adding a lot of people, and I think it is important for folks to have space to enjoy, but there's some concern from the neighbors in the back about how that would be programmed and how that would impact folks living behind. So could you speak to the programming and vision for the outdoor space that's on top of the parking garage in the west side of the building?
Yes. So the proposed roof deck is going to be for the exclusive use of the residents only. I know at the neighborhood meeting that we presented, there were some concerns about whether or not there would be use for the restaurant in that space, and there will not be. So it will be only for the residents, and we're looking at different landscaping options to mitigate the sound issues. And I believe, you know, we'll have residential units facing out towards the roof deck as well, and we'd want to make that enjoyable for them, too.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. And since we do have a motion to add a seventh condition, I did want to offer the applicant an opportunity to respond. Are there any concerns with adding that condition related to trees? Or the way that's worded? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we did that. So why don't we have a voice vote on adding that seventh condition first? So again, that is to have the applicant work with staff to add street trees. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Well, any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Thought that sounded very unanimous. All right. So we can go back to our original motion. Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, it sounds like the applicant is amenable to this, and like, you're probably going to do it anyway, but I wanted to add a condition to vent the exhaust from the garage out onto the Franklin Avenue side. Sorry, so I'll formally make a motion to require that the garage exhaust be vented north of the site onto Franklin Avenue.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Again, I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond. Are you comfortable with the way that's worded, or have any concern? Okay. Doesn't seem that there is any concern. So is there any further discussion on that? Commissioner Kronzer.
I just want to make a couple of general comments about this project. I mean, we've heard a little concern from the neighborhood about added vehicles, but I really want to call the attention of what this project is doing for the pedestrian and the pedestrian environment in the feel of the street right here. This is maybe one of the worst environments for pedestrians in the city. This project is cutting the crossing distance across Lindale. The corner's coming out. The sidewalks, both on Franklin and Lindale, are being improved with developer-cost street furniture that's sometimes done by the city. In this case, it's done by the developer. The height of the building itself is actually going to calm the street. There are studies showing that the taller the buildings, the more vertical elements closer to moving cars, the slower the cars go. So while, yes, we might be bringing a few more cars to the site, I believe the end result for the neighborhood is going to be a better pedestrian environment and a better car environment, because the cars will be going slower here. Applaud the design of this.
All right. Thank you. First, why don't we take a voice vote on adding an eighth condition related to the location of the garage exhaust? So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. So going back to our original motion on approval of the site plan review with now eight conditions, is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the site plan review, item F, with eight conditions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland.
Aye.
Sweezy.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Dagnan.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
8-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item eight. Our next item for discussion is item nine, which is a zoning code text amendment related to floodplain regulation. Staff, it's Mr. Verkota. And we discussed this at committee of the whole a few weeks ago. Maybe you could provide us with a quick update. Also, so I assume a few of you are interested in speaking on this item. Can I just see a show of hands? How many of you would like to speak? All right. So a few of you, so Mr. Verkota.
Thank you, Chair. As part of a map modernization project, FEMA has revised the flood insurance rate maps for the entire state of Minnesota. Hennepin County is actually running a little bit behind some of the other areas of the state. But the maps for Hennepin County have now been finalized, and they're set to go into effect on November 4th of this year. These new maps are largely based on revised topographical data, basically having better information on where the topography lines fall. There are some areas where the base flood elevations have been changed a bit based on some changes in the field conditions. So here, we have a map that shows basically the existing and proposed floodplain overlay. I'm going to show primarily the southern part of the city here, because that's where the largest change is. And I will show, this is what one of the new flood insurance rate map panels looks like, the blue being the actual floodplain as proposed by FEMA, excuse me, as set by FEMA. And then here is a zoom in of a portion of South Minneapolis, showing the areas of change, purple being areas where there's existing floodplain that's to remain, areas of red being additional area mapped newly into the floodplain, and then areas in green being areas that are currently in the floodplain that will have the floodplain designation removed. In order for the city to continue participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, we are required to adopt these maps, as well as amendments to the floodplain overlay district. So ultimately, FEMA does the research, they create the maps, and then come to us and say, "You need to adopt these." So we don't have the ability to change boundaries for individual properties or anything like that. They need to be adopted as presented by FEMA. And these new maps will go into effect on November 4th, whether or not they're adopted by the city. Ultimately, the difference is if the city adopts the new maps, we can continue participating in the National Flood Insurance Program, and property owners who have their dwelling in the floodplain, that's really the primary thing here, is whether the dwelling itself is in the floodplain or not. Those property owners will be able to buy federally subsidized flood insurance. If we don't adopt the maps, we will be removed from the National Flood Insurance Program. Property owners will still be required to get flood insurance. They will just need to get it through the private market, not through the subsidized And so we have the revised maps as prepared by FEMA, and then some amendments to the floodplain overlay district language. Those revisions are being requested both by FEMA and by the DNR to basically update our requirements to be more in line with state and federal requirements. And there's not really substantial changes to how these properties are regulated or anything like that. It's really just providing some more specifics for variances and condition use permits and some things like that. Staff has been working with property owners that have reached out to us over the past couple of months. All the property owners where there's a boundary change, whether it's an adder change, did receive, actually, two notices at public hearing due to an issue with the first notice that went out. And so several people have contacted staff, and we've been working to get them actual determinations for their property where possible. And we anticipate continuing to do that through adoption of the new maps and into the coming months, as lenders reach out to property owners where there may be changes into the requirements. I can answer any questions you might have.
All right. Well, first, Mr. Verkota, since we do have several people here, I'm just wondering, obviously, we don't have the discretion to add or remove properties from the floodplain district in this setting. If there are people who have questions or concerns about their property, what process should they follow?
Sure. I'm going to flip here to the map. So obviously, they're doing these a county at a time, and so, you know, they work with the best information they have, but they're not out surveying individual properties. They're going off LiDAR and usually using, you know, one-to-two-foot elevation contours. And so there are certainly cases where the boundary line doesn't necessarily reflect where that actual elevation falls. And so there are processes where a property that has been identified to be in the floodplain can get that designation removed. It's called a letter of map amendment, and that's basically presenting better information to FEMA, specific to the property, to demonstrate that that floodplain elevation doesn't actually impact the principal structure. And then FEMA would issue a letter basically saying that the principal structure is not impacted, and that insurance mandate is not there. And so that's the sort of information I've been working with property owners to get, using our own elevation information. And then Hennepin County is working on getting a new website online, a natural resources website, that has really good elevation contours, far better aerial photos than FEMA's using on their own maps here with the new floodplain data overlaid. And so that will be publicly available probably the first week of November for people to get good information.
Okay. So if anyone does have a question, they could probably contact you, and you could point them in the right direction at the very least, or have a conversation.
Absolutely. It's been about half my time over the past month and a half, and I'll continue doing that. And so my contact information is in the staff report, and I have a number of cards on me. So if people have specific questions, I'm more than happy to help them out with that.
Sounds good. Are there any further questions of staff? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing for this item at this time, and if there's anyone who'd like to speak, you can, I think we have a handful of people, perhaps, you can come to the microphone and state your name and address. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Yes.
My name is Peter Hankey. I live on 1100 East Minnehaha Parkway, which is directly affected by this, because I'm the only house in my block that is in the floodplain, and it's a significant expense. Obviously, it seems like I need to contact him to work out something, because it's not something that you can really change, which is kind of, there's a large financial impact to a lot of users, where you double your insurance rates, or triple them, in the case of my situation, by being in a floodplain, and I'm on the high point of the block, and I'm in the floodplain. So I just, I didn't know about the process, so I'll follow that. I'll contact him later. Thanks.
Sounds good. All right. And next speaker.
Hi, my name is Dave Williams. I live on 51st Portland, so we are now in the floodplain. We have lived there for nearly 40 years. I have lived in that neighborhood all my life. We have never had a flood. FEMA has come in and cut a very wide swath. I realize the city is covering its own interests by having to adopt these maps, but there has been no recourse for the individual homeowner to come in and say, "This is such overkill, and as this gentleman said, my insurance costs are going to go through the roof, whether they're federally subsidized or not." There was not going to be a wide impact, they said. 300-plus homes are being affected by this, some new people, some elderly, some what? I don't know. But the change for these people is going to be dramatic. By the very definitions, I printed out all of your paperwork, and I won't go through it now, but by your very definitions, nothing applies to that South Minneapolis neighborhood, around 51st, 52nd, Portland, Oakland. There is not one flood that has ever happened there. We are not in a flood zone. We are not in a flood area. We are not in a fringe flood area, whatever you want to call it. So I have had some experience with FEMA, with what they did out around the Lake Minnetonka area, and after a year and a half, I was able to get a variance, but it took me a year and a half in untold dollars, which we won't talk about here, to cover up something that was not necessary. So why are we putting people through this? Or is it such that we have to, and we're just sitting here flapping our jaws for no reason at all, just to vent? You know, it seems to me very unfair, and I think that they have to go through the very definitions that they put in here. And I work with water every day. I am a water systems manager for a very large wholesaler here. I deal with the acquisition of water and the drilling for it, the treatment of water, the disposal of water, and none of what they have here has anything to do with the betterment of the water resource for the city of Minneapolis, or for the Mississippi River Project, or whatever. It does not affect it. So their rationale from the get-go is flawed. And what do we as homeowners do to address that? It gives us no voice whatsoever. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I certainly would encourage you to contact Mr. Verkota and see if there is a possibility of starting the process of that map amendment, if you do have that concern. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I live at 5048 Logan Avenue South. My name is Janie Paulus. And my concern is that the term flood insurance is not really correct, because FEMA does not cover anything in a basement, but your heating, which would be your furnace, your water heater, and a washer and dryer. That is it. It does not cover any of the finished materials or your personal property. My husband and I have lived in this property for 15 years. My husband and I have lived in this property for 15 years, and we've paid $36,000 in flood insurance, not our homeowner's insurance, flood insurance. And two years ago, we lost our basement to Minnehaha Creek, going over its bounds and the water bubbling up. FEMA came out, reviewed the property, and said, you should not finish basements because it's not covered by the insurance. It has to come through the front door of the house and start building up from there in order for FEMA to cover these insurance. So my question is, these maps are created, but what we're talking about in southwest Minneapolis is not what we saw in North Carolina. We are not sitting on our rooftops. But I am paying $2,400 a year, and I got zero payment from FEMA when I lost my basement. But I can tell you that the city taxes me on that 800 square feet in the basement. My mortgage company gave me my mortgage based on that basement being finished. And if ever I go to try to resell my house, my house will be difficult to sell because I have this flood insurance that covers nothing to protect me as a homeowner, my personal properties, or the basement. So if we're going to say all these houses exist in this flood zone and FEMA is being required, then the city needs to come through and condemn all those basements and say, you cannot live in these basements. You cannot use them for living. You cannot improve them because FEMA will not cover anything on this. When I appealed to the congressman, both at the state and the federal level, their answer was, if we were going to cover what you're asking for, do you know what your FEMA rates would be? And my question to him, the staff members really, was this $36,000 that I've paid since I've lived in that home, who has that covered? Has that covered the people in Mississippi, North Carolina? It has not covered the people in southwest Minneapolis. Because when we all lost our properties, when the creek rose, and it was not the creek coming through our doors, it was hydraulic water pressure coming through and just bubbling up. A drain tile system would not control that water. It was Mother Nature out of its control. And it happens once every so many, I don't know, 50 years, whatever. But to me, it is criminal to ask us to pay this additional funds, which is now going to double, we're being told. So my husband and I will be paying about 50, or excuse me, $5,000. And you know what? We could go out on our own and buy our own furnace, our own water heater, and our own washer and dryer. We do not need this. And I know that's a federal dilemma. But when you create these maps and you say, if FEMA insurance is not there for you, you'd have to go out and buy your own flood, it doesn't really make a difference. This insurance does nothing for a homeowner.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please state your name and address.
I live on 53rd Morgan, and I really spent...
If you don't mind stating your name as well.
Oh, Robert Brewer. I spent over $60,000 to get my house out of the floodplain because I'm FEMA's map. My guy that's no longer there, they want to trade me $4,900 a year for flood insurance. I have done everything but almost stand on my hands and everything. How can they do this to me? I, my house is out of the floodplain. I've spent $1,000 in surveys, engineers, and everything. But because where the garage is at, they want me to pay $4,900 a year flood insurance. I can't get any help. Yet they want me to pay this. I've received letters that say, you are no longer in a floodplain. You don't need to pay this. Now I receive letters, they want me to pay $4,900 a year for a garage that does not exist, that was there a few years ago, is no longer existing. If I put a garage there, it's going to cost me $5,000 a year to have a garage. Forget it. What am I supposed to do? I mean, $4,900 a year for, you know, and a garage. I mean, there's one lady who said she spent over $30,000. I've been in my place since 1999. I spent a heck of a lot more than that. And if I need it, like she said, it covers absolutely nothing. The furnace, the hot water heater, AC, the whole nine yards. It covers absolutely nothing. Why can't something be done? I spent over 60 grand to get this house out of the floodplain. And it's absolutely worthless. Once you get in it, it's like, no, they won't let you get out. And I need to do something. Because like I said, you can see here, you know, you get to the garage, and they want to pay $4,900 a year flood insurance. So now I have to fight it.
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yeah, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hendrickson. I live at 4805 James Avenue South in Minneapolis. I'd like to thank Jane and you for your comments because I, too, stand here feeling very handcuffed and understand that this is a huge mountain to climb and don't know how to tackle FEMA. We just built a new home on that corner lot, the very back corner of our lot. Very, very back corner of the lot. We're built, we're a rambler, that's a walkout rambler, so we're built into a hill. We couldn't add on to the back of our home due to, we use the existing foundation. It had the new foundation, anything new had to be two feet over the floodplain. And so we went out the front of the house, but that had to be two feet over. So the existing foundation, we added what would have been 2,000 square feet. We only get to use 1,000 of the square feet up on top because you have to step up two feet. And so now we have a large storage room because the back corner of our property is in the floodplain. And I would like to see any research on any flood in that home since it's been built or in the area since, you know, I think it's absolutely ridiculous and somebody's got to tackle, I don't know who, how, feeling very handcuffed.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? If there are no other speakers, I will close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have two items before us. That is the map amendment and text amendment. Are there any further questions? Or would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Vreeland is moving approval, staff recommendation of items A and B, the map and text amendment. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I will add, and certainly I understand a lot of the frustration and anger associated with having a property that either has been in the floodplain all along or is identified in the new maps as being located in a floodplain. As we said before, you can certainly contact Mr. Verkota about the process of amending that map if it's possible. If, as he mentioned, the surveys that FEMA does look at, you know, rough elevations, but they're obviously surveying the entire country. So there may be instances where more refined information would show something else. But aside from that, clearly, we at the city don't have the ability to make changes to the map and certainly not in this setting. And the zoning regulations that we're asked to adopt are also largely established by FEMA and by the DNR and the state of Minnesota. So we don't have a lot of discretion over that. So I just wanted to emphasize that and certainly mention that we understand some of that frustration. Commissioner Vreeland.
Fortunately, not passing this doesn't make any of these issues better. So we, as the planning commission, have very little choice that would assist any of the folks that are speaking here. But we can certainly send to our colleagues in the city council, certainly capture the conversation here today and ask the city council to work with the rules of FEMA and to at least have a discussion about ways that folks can contact FEMA. So it's, we do, the city of Minneapolis does have some ability to work with the federal government in a way that we as a planning commission doesn't. And I would certainly look to Commissioner Bender for any suggestions as the appropriate way to do that. But I don't want to pass this and leave this this evening without, and I don't know if these folks will be able to speak at the city council, but I would certainly like to include the frustrations and challenges of how these, how the FEMA rules don't work well for many folks and what those issues are.
Thank you. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had, even before that comment, wanted to ask staff to just clarify the next steps in this process and just so we understand, so the folks who came tonight know what the next steps are and what are the decision points and then what discretion, you know, does the city council have, for example? Which would be the next step? Or what recourse people have if they don't agree?
Sure, Commissioner Bender. So the next step after this would be the zoning and planning committee of the city council. That is slated for October 27th and ultimately to the city council as a whole on November 4th, which is the date that the new map's going to effect. As I mentioned earlier, ultimately, we're required, in order to continue participating in the NFIP, we have to adopt the maps as they're presented to us. Those property by property, you know, fine level changes are handled through FEMA through the letter of map amendment process.
Are there any further questions or any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve items A and B. Clerk, please call a roll.
Vreeland.
Aye.
Squeazy.
Aye.
Slack.
Aye.
Rockwell.
Aye.
Magrino.
Aye.
Kronzer.
Aye.
Gignan.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Eight zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item nine and also concludes our meeting for today. We have committee of the whole this Thursday at 4:30. Executive committee before that at 3:30. And our meeting is adjourned.